Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the April 9, 2012 council meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Pastor Dexter Sanders, founder and director of Rock Orlando Center of Transformation, an evangelical organization that he has led for about six years. He's currently leading an initiative called Transformation Paramore, which seeks to bring spiritual, physical, and emotional transformation to the citizens of the Paramore community. Since arriving in Orlando six years ago, Pastor Sanders has worked in the area of evangelism, most specifically with youth and homeless individuals. He states that Rock Orlando's mission is to reach out to the population of people that make up the least, the last, and the lost. After that, the pledge will be led by District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart. Would you please join me in standing and bow on your heads?
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this glorious opportunity that you've given us today that we might stand before you. We also thank you, God, that you will allow us to be both your servant and your children today. We thank you for the rising of the sun this morning, and Father, for allowing us to breathe your air. And we thank you, God, for this assembly. And we ask right now that you will bless first your servant leader of the city, Mayor Dyer, and then, Father, I'm asking that you will empower and bless the elected officials that stand around him and those who make up our city leaders. I pray, God, that you will continue to give them wisdom, knowledge, and discernment all through your spirit, God, that the decisions they make that impact this city will be ones that will empower the city, but ultimately it will bring honor and glory to you. We pray, Father, that you would just bless this gathering and that everything that we've done here, God, will be pleasing to you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Dyer?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Lyman?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And let's quickly take up our consideration the minutes of the March 26, 2012 agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor, the motion indicates a by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, so the motion carries. Okay, I want to congratulate Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, and Commissioner Ings on winning their reelection bids by overwhelming margins. And I want to congratulate new District One Commissioner Jim Gray. Jim, where are you? Would you stand up so everybody can see you? All right. I look forward to working with you guys over the next four years. All right, let's go to awards presentations. Marcia, if you'll come to the podium, and we want to, I'll let you do the intro.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. As you may know, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and it is a time that we want to raise everyone's awareness about how to reduce incidents of sexual assault in Orlando and Central Florida. Many organizations assist and protect victims of sexual assault in Orlando. Leading among them are the Victim Service Center of Central Florida and Harbor House of Central Florida. Today Gina Costa, Executive Director of the Victim Service Center, and Carol Wick, Executive Director of Harbor House, along with some of their board members are among our special guests today in support of this proclamation. Mayor Dyer, Gina will give a brief introduction to the proclamation, and then afterwards if you would read and present it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marcia.
You're welcome, Gina.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, City Council members. Thank you for recognizing the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The goal of SAM is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and to educate communities and individuals on how to prevent sexual violence. By working together and pooling our resources during the month of April, we can highlight sexual violence as a major, public health, human rights, and social justice, and reinforce the need for prevention efforts. The Victim Service Center of Central Florida is proud to serve as the only sexual violence center in Orlando. Every 15 minutes, the Victim Service Center provides service to a victim of sexual assault via 24-hour sexual assault hotline, crisis intervention, court advocacy, forensic exam, assistance with victims' compensation, or by providing resources and information. We also provide weekly individual therapy and support groups. The services we offer at the Victim Service Center are vital to the community. The effects of sexual violence can be devastating. Victims of sexual assault are three times more likely to suffer from depression, six times more likely to suffer from post-traumatic stress, 13 times more likely to abuse alcohol, 26 times more likely to abuse drugs, and four times more likely to contemplate suicide. In April, we have planned several prevention and outreach activities to inform the public about our services, the prevalence of sexual violence, and how to prevent it. We encourage all citizens to engage in public and private efforts to bring awareness to sexual violence and how it can be prevented. As a community, it is time to talk about it. And I'm here today with one of my board members, Craig Swigert. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll read the proclamation, City of Orlando Proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community, and whereas statistics indicate that one in six women in Florida have been raped in her lifetime, and 42 percent of women in Florida have experienced other forms of sexual violence, and whereas staff and volunteers at the Victim Service Center of Central Florida encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence through prevention, education, and increased awareness, and whereas perpetrators who commit acts of sexual violence must be held responsible for their actions, and whereas the Victim Service Center of Central Florida strongly supports our national, state, and local partners, and encourages all citizens to actively engage in public and private efforts to raise awareness about sexual violence, and whereas the City of Orlando joins the Victim Service Center, Harbor House, and other advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Orlando.
Okay, Timothy Johnson for a 25-year service award. Wow.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I would like to introduce to you today Stephen Nemeth. Stephen came to work for the City of Orlando, March 16, 1987, in the preventive maintenance section of the Facilities Management Public Works Department. His job at that point was to set up schedules for maintenance of public plumbing, excuse me, plumbing facilities throughout the city. Steve later moved to the construction side of our business, where he worked on all new businesses, all new buildings and properties throughout the city. In 1989, one of the little-known history things here, while our current city hall was under construction, there was a typical Florida rainstorm that flooded the old city hall. Steve was called to duty, and he assisted in removing four feet of sand, silt, and water from the basement. Steve was one of those staff members who responded that Saturday afternoon to help make our business place presentable on the next business day. Other major projects that Steve worked on included the Westmoreland and Woods Avenue facilities. He also helped with plumbing, I mean, excuse me, plumbing with substations in various parks around the city. One of note is McQueen Park. And he helped to put plumbing facilities in those parks that didn't have plumbing. Steve transferred to permitting in 2004, and he performed inspections and plan reviews. He enjoys sharing his knowledge with homeowners and his coworkers. Steve is married to Bernice, who's retired after 30 years working with the Department of Health. You'll know, as we all know, Steve is a very confident, quiet professional who always has a smile on his face. He enjoys an active lifestyle of running, biking, and kayaking. He's very helpful to our customers. He really likes helping homeowners who try to put their own plumbing in, which is a good thing. Mayor and council, my colleagues and I would like for you to join us in celebrating Steve Nemeth for his 25 years of significant contribution to the city.
Now I'd like to call on Patricia Newton, the city's Human Relations official, who will preview Fair Housing Month activities.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. April is Fair Housing Month. To celebrate, the city will host, along with several partners, on Thursday, April 26, One Community, Many Faces, a regional fair housing summit honoring the late Albert Nelson, former director of the City of Orlando's Human Relations Office, for his 27 years of service as a local leader responding to the needs of Orlando's diverse communities, and champion for civil rights for all Americans. For more information about the summit, residents should go to www.fairhousingsummit.info. The city sent an example throughout Florida and the southern region of the United States by eliminating barriers that prevented qualified minorities from obtaining employment in our fire and police departments, passing an ordinance to enforce equal opportunity for all, adding sexual orientation as a protected class to our ordinance, and being the first in Central Florida to establish a domestic partnership registry. The Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations continues to be responsible for establishing and maintaining communication among city government, the general public, and community organizations promoting equal opportunity. I'd like to introduce members of our staff who are responsible for these civil rights initiatives. I'd like to introduce Ron Wilson, Carmen Feliciano, we have David Gillespie, and Virginia Moore, who is unable to be with us today, and we also have our director, Marcia Hope Gutwin. We have some partners here who help us do our job, and also they're partnering to help us put on this summit in honor of Mr. Nelson. And they are here, and I'd like for you to stand, and that's Brant Bitner. He's the Executive Director of the Orange County Bar Association. He's brought some paralegals with him today, and that's Candace De Sorbo, Els Coulter, and Mike Fergersky. We have Ally Branswell, the Executive Director of the Central Florida Urban League. Ally? I haven't seen Jill McReynolds, but if Jill, Jill was invited to come, she is a partner with us, and we go out all the time doing first-time homebuyer fair housing sessions for her. She's the Executive Director of Hands of Central Florida, Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida, brought an entire row. And we have Bill Abdul. I knew I was going to get that wrong, right? Kimberly Deary, Maritana, Luxmi, Panzardi, Sarah Cortez, Alvin Cruz, Karen Curry, Laura Johnson, Carl Armstrong, and Edison Rosando. Thank you for coming. Mayor, proclamation?
Whereas April 11, 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law. Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 is amended, which affirms a national policy of fair housing. And whereas on April 9, 1973, the City of Orlando passed Chapter 57 Code of the City of Orlando, which provided the Office of Human Relations an effective tool to implement programs to eliminate discrimination and to foster affirmative action in our community. And whereas the City of Orlando is committed to highlight the fair housing law, and whereas fair housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans, and whereas on January 12, 2012, the City of Orlando was the first government in Central Florida to establish a domestic partnership registry and to take the important step of giving domestic partners some of the same basic rights that other couples in committed relationships have, and whereas the Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations encourages all citizens to participate in Orlando's One Community, Many Faces, a regional fair housing summit. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the month of April 12 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Orlando. How about everybody that Patricia named who has anything to do with Fair Housing Month, come on up. Is that a bad thing?
Yeah.
We'll move right into the mayor's update. We already mentioned that elections occurred and are done as of last Tuesday. I want to mention a couple of other things. When I first took office in 2003, one of the first things I did was I realized I had not been in local government, and I needed to better understand what all the functions of the local government were. So I decided that once a month, at least once a month, I would go work alongside city employees. And last Friday, March 30, I participated in my 100th city work long. And I was able to combine two of the major themes, which are working with city staff and understanding what they do, along with giving back to our community. So as part of our, as the 100th work long, I went out with Chief Rooney and members of the OPD to install window air conditioning units in several homes of elderly residents in Orlando's Paramore community, and it was very uplifting. Once again, I figured out that whoever else was doing the work knew how to do it better than I did, and there were no injuries, and there are many residents now in Paramore that are being, that are cool at night. It is with deep respect and gratitude that I announced that after 25 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Orlando, Deputy Chief Larry Zwig will retire next month, and he will head up MBI, which he has worked with or in for several years. And I have appointed Robert Pigman as the new deputy chief effective May 1st, 2012. Most of you know and have worked with Captain Pigman, so you know he's an outstanding officer, a respected leader, excellent representative of the city and OPD, and a great addition to Chief Rooney's command team. Is he here today, Chief? He came to lunch and had to go back to work. Okay, well, we welcome Chief Pigman. A few months ago, we announced that the Solar Bears were coming out of hibernation and returning to play at the new Amway, and ever since that, there's been buzz about the Solar Bears. Tomorrow night is another exciting night, leading to the opening of their season in October. Tomorrow night, the Solar Bears will unveil their new home and road jerseys. We're looking forward to having them play in the Amway Center, and they will play at least 36 home games a year, so more activity for our downtown. I will tell you, a little embarrassing moment this morning, I was on a radio show, and they decided to do a call-in quiz thing where I played against somebody else. And I'm going to concede, although I'm a big sports fan, I don't know all the trivia about hockey. So I did not get many of those right this morning. And speaking of the Amway Center, we continue to generate awards. The City of Orlando was just awarded the 2011 Award of Merit from the Florida Parking Association for the Geico Garage. So, wow, it's pretty heavy, actually. So I'd like to, any city staff that worked on this project, including Tim, stand or raise your hand, and we want to say thank you. Okay, and a couple items of note from the agenda. As part of the Sunrail project, FDOT is channeling about $6,500 per station to the city to pay for public arts that stops at our commuter rail stops, a project that is called Art in Transit. So on today's agreement there, or today's agenda, there's an agreement with FDOT to provide $26,000 to the City of Orlando to acquire artwork for display at the four Sunrail stations. So you'll recall that we removed the old orange blossom special from its resting place on Church Street, or the Church Street Sunrail Station, and relocated it to the Railroad Museum in Parrish. But before we did that, we removed the historic iconic bell from the train, and it will go on display in the rotunda between now and the time that we turn it into a piece of art that will be displayed at the Church Street Station. So we'll have that unveiling later this afternoon. The city recently completed almost a mile extension of the Katy Way Trail, and we're currently working on another mile and a half. And I want to finally recognize that we have members of the Vietnamese-American Memorial Committee who are here at today's meeting in support of the monument that they plan to construct at Orlando's Veterans Park. Would you please stand and be recognized? With that, we're going to move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of agenda items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the council members an opportunity to comment on items that they feel appropriate from the consent agenda, as well as update you on important issues for their districts. We rotate the order in which the commissioners go, and today we're going to begin with Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me wish everyone a happy Easter. Thank you for the Amway hosted First Baptist Church and I think Pope Church yesterday. Wonderful celebration of 17,000 people that were down there. And the mayor, you were there and had a chance to offer a special greeting. So it's just a great way to bring our community together. So thank you all for those. A couple of congratulations I'd like to share. First is I want to say thank you, or congratulations to those who got elected and those who ran. Elections are very important in our community. I had an opportunity to share a little bit with our, some of our associations, and I honor any person who's willing to kind of put their life on the line to run for public office. So congratulations to those who ran and to those who have been elected mayor especially to you. I also want to thank Amy Anako and Alanna Brenner, our city clerk, and Amanda Green, and Dee, and Ridge, and all the people of the clerk's office for running a great election. Appreciate having an opportunity to serve on the canvassing board with them, and they did a wonderful job. Thank you very much for your diligence and for putting up with me. College Park Partnership has announced their award winners. If you get a chance, I'm going to share with you in just a minute something that you can hear. You can find those award winners. And special thanks to Debbie Getz and the work that she does over there as the new Main Street President in College Park. Last month, Princeton Elementary won the Florida Elementary School Science Olympiad out of 44 teams throughout the state of Florida. This was Princeton's first year competing. So congratulations to the 12-team members and the two coaches that were part of that. Of course, congratulations to the new deputy chief, Rob Pigman, and congratulations to outgoing deputy chief Larry Zwig. In a few weeks, we get an opportunity to also congratulate one of our own. The Edgewater High School Hall of Fame has assigned that they were going to induct seven new members into the Hall of Fame. There's some information about it in the College Park paper. One of those being inducted is our own Byron Brooks. Where's Byron? All right.
Commissioner, are you going to note that Byron's sister got in a year before he did?
That's right. And also note that also going in this class is my brother Jacob and my brother George, who will be going in before me. But it's again a wonderful honor for our community. And Byron, I have some stuff for you to take back and share with your family to prove that you are really important as we actually say that you are here. So I appreciate your service to our community. On Saturday, April 14, we're going to have a spring cleanup down Edgewater Drive. We're asking volunteers to come out and meet us at College Park Baptist Church. We're going to do an up-and-down cleanup of Edgewater Drive. We'll start at 8 o'clock this Saturday, the 14th. And of course, this Saturday is also Lou Gardens Jazz and Blues Stroll. We'll start at 6 o'clock. And then, of course, also Saturday is Audubon Park Garden District Kid Fest over at Audubon Park, the old Audubon Park Elementary School. So if you get a chance, you want to know more information, you can go to their website or contact my office, and I'll be glad to share it with you. Thursday, April 19, is the Annual Taste of College Park, sponsored by the College Park Rotary. It's a great opportunity for us to join some of our resources together and to help raise some money for the youth of our community. So please come join us. And the only thing I'd like to mention on the agenda today is the Vietnamese-American Memorial Committee. Thank you all very much for being here. Ms. Son Lee and Mr. Kufam, if I got that correctly. I never get it right. Is that close enough? I want to thank John Perone and all the work of the Parks and Recreation Department, and especially Dave Arnott, if Dave is here. Dave, thank you for your work and your diligence in making sure this continues to be, to move forward, and I appreciate your work and what you've done so far. It'll be a wonderful addition to Memorial Garden over there, and I appreciate your work as far as that's concerned. And with that, that's all that I have. Mayor?
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Congratulations to you and Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Ings and Commissioner-elect Jim Gray in the back. And Commissioner Gray, this is the council book. Every two weeks, you're going to get one of these. This is actually a light one. So Alanna, we need to get Commissioner Gray his council book so he can start beefing up, because I got to tell you, it's a lot of reading. But congratulations, Commissioner. I think you could be a great addition to the team. I'd like to thank District Four for rehiring me. Thank you very much. And Deputy Chief Rob Pigman, I really enjoy working with him, and he's going to be a great addition to the OPD team. I was delighted, Ed, if you want to run the PowerPoint, to be able to participate in a very special event. Ed, got it? The Orlando chapter of the American Institute of Architects recognizes The Orlando Chapter of the American Institute of Architects recognized Process Architecture in the unbuilt category for the Mills 50 bus shelters. These are actually pretty neat. They're actually bus shelters, they're very futuristic, they're made out of coriander, and they're going to be, they're actually solar. And the light that you see, saw in the beginning there, actually, it will, the sunlight, the solar energy will come in, the panels will be, yeah, there they are. The solar energy will be stored during the day, and then at night, they will light up in different colors, so it's kind of neat. And it was actually recognized by the American Institute of Architects in the unbuilt category. Of course, we want to work with links to get these built, but it's really kind of neat to see the creativity coming out of our Main Street program. It's really, really exciting. We've got seven locations. I'm actually going to be helping them out. Yeah, these are just seven locations in the Mills and Colonial area, and I'm going to be helping him out with some of the CIP funding from my district for it, but it's going to be a great project, really help define this area. And we're even going to put one up, Commissioner Stewart's area up there at Mills Park, so yeah, I think this could be a great addition. And again, it's great to see Wes Featherstone and his group at Process Architecture winning a regional award, so we really are excited to see that. Sue Lee and the Friends with the Vietnamese Association, it's great to see you here today, and I'm glad that we finally got you a location for the memorial, and I'm delighted, on behalf of my family who also served in the war, you know, to see this finally coming to fruition. So thank you so much for being here today. And on the agenda today also, on item B8, transportation, school buses for the recreational programs and after-school All-Stars, this is very important in terms of what we do for children. On item C3, I want to thank staff from the Orlando Health Heart Institute banners, again, helping, helping celebrate a local business. And I'm delighted to see on item C9, the Art in Transit Project for Sunrail. As I've traveled in other cities, they do have art at their, at their stations, and it's wonderful to be able to enjoy that, so I'm really glad to see that we're putting, putting funding aside for that. And without that, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Five. Commissioner Alana.
Thank you. First, congratulations, Mayor, and Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, Commissioner Ings, and of course, Commissioner-Elect Jim Gray. I look forward to working with you on your reelections and elections. Just a few announcements before getting to the agenda. This morning, we had a very interesting workshop, and one that I normally look forward to. I don't look forward to all workshops, but I do like the legislative reviews, because it gives us an idea of what is happening in Tallahassee when we're not following it very closely. But this morning, we had our entire lobbying team, and Kathy Russell, who gave a great overview. And I want to say a real special thanks to Kevin Edmonds, Byron Brooks, Lori, Mike Rose, everybody who has been helping, I think Rodney Williams, who's been helping us on one of those appropriations, if we're fortunate to get it done. There's a lot of work to be done, but I want to say a special thanks to Senator Siplin, who made that possible. I know the governor is in town today. If you see what we do in Orlando, maybe this would be one of those times when he would move in our favor to do something great for our community. So I want to, and I may have overlooked someone, I've forgotten them, but I know that I always enjoy working with our staff to make great things happen. And once it's signed and we do get the money, then you will hear a really enthusiastic cry-out in some of the things we're going to do with that appropriations. I want to also announce that on Wednesday night, I believe it is, Orlando Housing Authority and Creative Village will, will have a planning session in Paramore. The sad thing about that, we've, they've announced a couple of meetings, and it's very, very clear that almost everything we do in Paramore is a public meeting. But someone just continued to, I guess, agitate the media, and apparently, they didn't read it very well either, the flyer that says, "You are invited to come out and help us plan on a grant-writing opportunity for Creative Village and Affordable Housing." So I just want to, for the record, clarify that there are opportunities to get misinformation all the time, but the best way not to get it is go to the meeting. And nobody has a meeting that is posted and letters sent to everybody's house if they're not operating transparently. So I want to congratulate Vivian Bryant and her team for working this thing through and getting it to the community, and trying to become a part of something that could be great in Creative Village. So just pay attention, the meeting is, I think, 7:00 or 6:30 at Callahan. Please come out and see for yourselves, participate, particularly if you live there and have something that you wish to put into the ideas. Special thanks on that. Congratulations, Captain Pigman, for getting promoted to Deputy Chief. And if I call you Chief Deputy, I just normally forget, but the captain here just told me that's what it was, I mean, Commissioner. So now to a couple of items on the agenda. On C5, I think, I'm not sure, did the mayor talk about that earlier? The Sunrail surplus right, I think, right-of-way, isn't it? That will go into the bike and pedestrian trail, and that is really, really great between Washington Street and Marks. If you've ever seen those walk-in bike and pedestrian trailways, they are phenomenal, especially along the Karmic Road and Apaka area, it's wide, they're used all the time. That entire trail is, so I think that's a great opportunity to use that right-of-way in a great way. And on, on C8, I don't know whether we're just getting the movement for the playoff banners, are we in a playoff?
Not yet.
Oh. I was like, boy, when did I miss that one? I normally do, but I was like, oh, that's good, we're going to have the playoffs. So I guess, look forward to TV9, ask them if you've got some basketball tickets. And I would give them the same answer again this year. And I do congratulate us on Art in Transit. I do remember being in Portland, Oregon, when we were there for Light Rail, the great, great art in the stations on Light Rail. And we take art very serious because it helps in the commute. And this is a great program, and I look forward to our moving it forward. On agenda item F1, Dr. Francois with the multicultural program that combats age and HIV is one of the most phenomenal women I've ever met. Dr. Francois is what I call a workhorse. If you've ever watched the movie, the new movie War Horse, she is just that kind of a horse, and getting things done. So I congratulate them. We normally partner with them each year on our health festival, so I'm glad to see us keeping that up and keeping that multicultural wellness center in our budget. And I, of course, absolutely must support H3, because as the gas prices go up, we've got to offset that with the taxi drivers. But, you know, on the gas prices, I have to say, it is kind of sad to hear the community, out of ignorance, I know, blame a president for gas prices, when we never want to blame the real people who create these things such as speculators. And I like to call people out when they need to be called out and take the pressure off someone who isn't. And we need to educate ourselves. President of the United States, whether it's a deal or, has absolutely nothing to do with it, but as a council, we find it our responsibility to help offset the expenses, and I gladly vote on that agenda item. I am voting no on agenda I2, because I have a problem when these small firms come in, compete against smaller, small firms, and then just maintain the usual 24%. When our general philosophy is, we go over, even when it's a small project. We like people who think big about things we do in the city, and I know I do, and I'm not going to vote for that company. And only one person put Bob Burns, Aria Burns, in first place, and that's the person who probably knew most about MWBE, and that was the MWBE staff. And I wish you'd used that as a teachable moment to everybody else on that committee, but I will not support that. I will not vote for agenda item I7, and I would tell you why. Even though it's a very small budget, because EPA only requires 9% MBE and 3% WBE, the contractor kept it to those numbers. And I believe, when you do business with a city that has an MWBE program, you can exceed what is required, just as you can exceed other things that are required, even as we've done through our blueprint, and have proven it can be done. I will not vote for mediocre contractors coming forth with a mediocre idea, and that just doesn't sit well with me. So probably had it been a much larger contract, maybe the contractor would have done differently. I don't know. But I think it's the idea and the philosophy that counts. So I think, for now, Mayor, that is sufficient to get us through District Five's business.
Okay, we'll move on to District Six. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations to you on your reelection to the Office of Mayor for the city of Orlando, and also to Commissioner Tony Ortiz and Commissioner Patty Sheehan. And of course, Commissioner-Elect Jim Gray, again, congratulations on your win. I'd also like to congratulate Deputy Chief Rob Pigman for his selection by Chief Rooney. And Chief Rooney, obviously, you see a lot of great things and a lot of great people, and Rob certainly is one of those who would do a great job for the Orlando Police Department. Then also, thank you to Deputy Chief Larry Zwig for your service to the Orlando Police Department and the city of Orlando. And he will certainly be missed from the police department, but we know that he'll be over there at MBI, so we'll still have some relationship with him. And Mayor, also on the proclamation for the Fair Housing Month, I'd just like to say, thank you really for maintaining the Office of Human Relations, because it does make a difference in our community, and we can see just how valuable they, they were to the city of Orlando and those in our surrounding areas. We still have a lot more work to be done in that area as it relates with the Office of Human Relations and how we're going to strengthen that and, and kind of get it back to the way that it was, specifically the leading status that it once had in our community. We want to continue that because our people still need help, and we see that in so many different ways. And on the agenda item, the OPD Metro West Police Substation Design Build Project, this is a great opportunity for us within the police department to establish a presence there in Metro West, how we're going to protect the people as we do so well throughout the city, but how we're going to continue to build greater relationships with the people in the Metro West area. Also, I had my fourth annual Spring to Health Bingo and Social Health Fair that was held on Friday, March 30th, at the L. Claudia Allen Center. Four local senior centers participated in the bingo tournament, including L. Claudia Allen, Rosemont, Callahan, and Rock Lake. And L. Claudia Allen Senior Center was the first-place winner this year, beating out Rosemont, who was first-place winner for the past two years, and they came in second place. Health screenings were provided to our seniors, including blood pressure and glucose and cholesterol, spinal vein, and diabetic foot checks. And also, we encouraged our vendors to participate in the bingo. Of course, you know, if they won, they would be given their items over to the seniors. But I'd just really like to thank, and there were so many, United Healthcare, Family Physicians Group, WellCare, Advance, Med equip, Mr. and Mrs. Mobility, Center for Drug-Free Living, Shine, Community Health Services, Life Care Florida, Hope &amp; Help, Orlando Heart Specialists, Kirkman Chiropractor, Boston Diagnostics, Florida Hospital, and special thanks to Lena Coleman, WellCare Health Plans, and Herb Williams, the center manager, Brenda Clark, and the rest of the staff at the Claudia Allen Senior Center. And I named all of those sponsors because our seniors really get involved with them, and I am just so happy that our sponsors are really coming out and taking a great interest in our seniors. And then we had our sixth annual Excellent Kids Health Fair and Easter Egg Hunt, that was at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on Saturday, March 31st. Local residents were given an opportunity to take advantage of community resources, health screenings, and receive the appropriate information to make informed choices regarding their children's health. Families enjoyed a traditional Easter egg hunt, inflatable obstacle courses, face painting, music, and entertainment. I would like to thank our vendors for coming out and lending their support, extending hands, HIV and breast and cancer awareness, kids beating cancer, bone marrow registry, Center for Multicultural Awareness and Prevention, HIV counseling and testing, CNC Pharmacy, health screenings, Lupus Foundation of Florida, Organizing for America, voter registration, Community Blood Bank, Blood Drive, Sunrail, and Operational Lifesaver Activities and Safety Brochures, and Steinway Society of Central Florida Programs for Children. And I'd also like to thank OPD Captain Carl Metzger from Special Operations Division for our horses and motorcade, Orlando Fire Department, Vicki Robles, Public Relations Division, for sponsoring and getting the firefighters from Station Number Seven to do blood pressure checks, and also the fire engine that's always a hit with the youth, Marlon Porte, the center manager, and the Dr. James R. Smith Center staff, thank you, L. Bethel Temple, thank you, Demetrius Denard, Elder George Sloan, and volunteers. And then Howard Gentry of the Young Blacks in Action, thank you for your help, Alexis Collins with Onik Prodigy, visual art, dance, and drum performances, as well as April Jennings. And then on, on Thursday, April 5th, the Orange County Health Department held its Regional Smoke-Free Parks Press Conference. Dane Weester with the Orange County Health Department, Public Information Officer, coordinated this, this event. Mayor's Kenneth Bradley from Winter Park, and Mayor Gary Broom from Windermere, and Dr. Kevin Sharon from Orange County Health Department, and others were on hand to celebrate the 2012 National Public Health Week, and the theme was "A Healthy America Begins Today." The press conference was held at Lake Yola Park at 10:00 AM that Thursday, and this was organized to recognize the Orange County cities and towns that have adopted resolutions supporting smoke-free parks. The city of Orlando led the way in this effort. Thank you, John Perone, Orlando Parks Director, who posted signs in our city parks within the city of Orlando that read, "Children Play Here, Thank You for Not Smoking." And to date, nine of the 10 municipalities within the Orange County jurisdiction that have public parks have passed resolutions urging citizens not to smoke in public parks where children are often playing. By making that commitment, each of those communities are ensuring that children are protected from secondhand smoke, thereby creating a healthier lifestyle. Dr. Sharon of the Orange County Health Department also gave awards to the Orange County Public Schools, University of Central Florida, Valencia College, and the YMCA for adopting policies, for taking steps to make all of their campuses smoke-free, and these policies alone impact hundreds of thousands of people. And then on, April is considered the National Financial Literacy Month. A financial workshop will take place on Saturday, April 21st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on Bruton Boulevard. This financial workshop is free, open to the public, and is organized by the National Association of Black Accountants, Linda Howard, Orlando Utilities, Central Florida Urban League, Ally Braswell, and the National Council of Negro Women. Topics will include credit, identity theft, budgeting, savings, investing, and life insurance. It's never too late to get your finances right and straight. Refreshments will be served. You can RSVP with my aide Cynthia Wilson at 407-246-3016. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Don.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the mayor and Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, and Commissioner Ings on their reelections last week, and wish them all the best. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner-Elect Jim Gray, and wish him all the best in, in the District One seat, and I'd note that he is the first elected official in the city And I'd note that he is the first elected official in the city of Orlando to live south of the 528, so it's a bit of a milestone and a bit of a recognition of all the growth we've had in southeast Orlando, and I think he'll be a very fine representative for the citizens down there. I'd like to add my congratulations to Deputy Chief Larry Zwig on his move to the MBI, and then also congratulate new Deputy Chief Robert Pigman. I thought he did a very fine job in East Patrol, and I know he'll do a very fine job as a deputy chief with the Police Department. Speaking of the Police Department and all their good work, I want to thank them for participating, along with the Conway Community Council and the recent Crime Prevention Forum held by the Conway Community Council recently. I thought it was a great forum, well-attended, and I think the citizens got a lot out of it. I also want to congratulate a couple of neighborhood associations on their great work. First of all, Village Walk, I think they deserve recognition, they had a recent Neighborhood Watch meeting with something in excess of 100 people, so I thought that was a great turnout, and I want to encourage them to keep up the good work. And then also congratulate Mystic Cove and Coach Holmes on their good work as well in their activities. And then lastly, just want to wish everybody a happy Easter and a happy Passover. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
We'll move to District 2, Commissioner Tony Ortiz or Mr. 80%.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, on the same lines, let me congratulate, congratulate you, Mayor, congratulate Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Ings and Commissioner-elect Jim Gray for your winnings. I also want to congratulate every other person that competed on this electoral process. It's not easy. It keeps America the greatest place in the world to live. On a personal side, I want to thank God, first and foremost, and our constituents for coming out and giving us a second chance to represent them in District 2. I also want to congratulate and thank, actually, each and every one of our city staff that have, for so long, for the past four years, worked with us on a one-on-one basis, and have helped us so much in turning our district around. It's been a great 180. So thank you all for that, and thank you to the commissioners and the mayor, once again, for helping us out during this process. Happy Easter, everybody. And let me talk a little bit about, there's some sad news. The mother of a good friend, Juan Triana, the president of the Semirun Business Partnership, passed away. So our condolences and our prayers are with you and your family, Juan. He has been a great leader in our community, has helped us tremendously bring District 2 to another level. Amen to the board at the Semirun Business Partnership. But I want you all to keep him on your prayers. Speaking of the Semirun Business Partnership, I also want to congratulate the business owners that have been attending the Business Crime Watch training in collaboration with the Sheriff's Office. Soon we'll be, we'll have a Business Watch program in the Semirun Business, in the summer quarter. And this is a milestone for our area. Things have really turned around around that area. And I promise you, before the end of this next four years, you will not recognize that area, God willing. Anyhow, kudos to the Orlando Baptist Church for their annual health fair. I have attended this event for the past three years, and it's always a great event. This past Saturday, we had our Neighborhood Watch kickoff event at the Dover Shores Community Center. Over 55 residents attended the event. I want to congratulate and thank our Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, Kia, I'm going to go by the maiden name counsel, because it's Cherfier, right? Okay. Officer Rosado, Lieutenant Waters, Corporal Akey, Detective Taylor, and Detective Gonzalez for attending the kickoff and for giving our community all sorts of presentations. As always, safety is our first priority in District 2 and in the whole city, for that matter. We lost Deputy Chief Larry Zwig, who has been a great asset to the Orlando Police Department and a great friend to me. But Mayor, you have appointed a great man to the position of DC. He has lots of experience and bring a great deal of wisdom to the table, so congratulation to both of our deputy chiefs, the one leaving and the one coming in. On the agenda, I just want to say something about item F1, which is basically, here we go, to congratulate, or I'm glad, basically, that we are on a second, approving this grant agreement for the HOPWA, for the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, I think is a great element of our community, and I'm glad that we are utilizing resources to help people with this terrible disease that has overwhelmed us in the past. So, with that being said, Mayor, I think that's all I have.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have a NID meeting, so we will recess the city council meeting and call the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting to order. There's one item of business accepting the meeting minutes of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Council for the meeting of March 14th, 2012. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Diamond, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll adjourn the NID meeting, and let's see, we don't have OPEB, and we don't have CRA. So that brings us to hearings. And we have one hearing, and this is for the proposed Seventh Amended and Restated Development Order for the Orlando Corporate Center Development of Regional Impact, and is related to PD Ordinance 2012-12, which is on the agenda today for second reading. This amendment proposes to add about an acre and a half parcel of land to the DRI, along with allowing an additional 14,010 square feet of commercial development. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Diamond.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan. I'd now like to open the hearing for public testimony. Is there anybody that would like to testify on this matter? All right, we will close the hearing, call a question on the motion, or is there discussion? Call a question on the motion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number one, Madam Clerk, if you would read that.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change, renaming Revere Avenue, generally located between West Concord Street and Alexander Place, to Blocker Avenue, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. Okay. Last week, we amended
Yes.
Blocker Avenue to Ron Blocker Avenue, and I have been advised by the school district that their preference is now Ronald Blocker Avenue. So if I can have a motion to amend Ron Blocker to Ronald Blocker Avenue, is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the, well, actually, does anybody want to debate that? Okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so we are now on Ronald Blocker Avenue, and Commissioner Linum has offered the main motion, seconded by Commissioner Ings. Is there discussion, is there public, anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. And that's supposed to be a secret from Ronald Blocker, but we'll see.
A public hearing.
Right. Okay, number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida zoning certain land generally located to the east of the intersection of South Goldenrod Road and Hoffner Avenue, comprised of approximately 1.54 acres of land, as planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district, by adding the land to the existing and adjacent Orlando Corporate Center planned development district, directing amendment to the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Diamond, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, I'm going back to Mayor's comments because I forgot to recognize, we talked about the bell and moving the orange blossom special, and I just took note that we have a bunch of staff that worked on that, sitting out in the audience. Would you guys all please stand? Everybody that was associated with moving the train or removing the bell from the train, please stand and be recognized. You guys are thinking the mayor's having a senior moment, forgotten to recognize, so we're just going to sit here and stare him down until he does.
It's good to know it's more than I have senior moments.
Yeah. I think Kathy Russell had one this morning as well.
Yes, you did, too.
Okay. So we will unveil the bell immediately after the council meeting today down in the rotunda, so everybody's invited to come down and do that. Okay, back to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida mending the planned development zoning district regulations for certain real property generally located north of Columbia Street, south of Monte Carlo Trail, east of South Goldenrod Avenue, and west of South John Young Parkway, comprised of 14.4 acres more or less, mending the planned development district's development program, site plan, boundaries, and conditions of development, directing amendment to the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Linum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion passes. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida mending the city's growth management plan to designate certain real property generally located at the northeast of the intersection of the Martin Anderson Beach Line Expressway and Narcisse Road, comprised of about 29 acres, as a community activity center on the city's official future land use map, amending subarea policy S. 39.1 to exclude said property, and creating new subarea policy S. 39.6 to include said property, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Diamond, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for, those of you who tuned in at home, and all of you who joined us here in council chambers.